Okay, for the meeting started at six oh one, we'll call Gloria.
Councilwoman Yura.
Yes.
Councilman Palmer Lee.
President.
Councilman McCormick.
President.
Councilman Grandy.
President.
Councilman Musser.
President.
Council Vice President D'Agostino.
President.
Council President Collins.
President. Possible motion, motions to convene into closed executive session. As listed on the agenda. Motion made second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? For a closed session, I'd like to invite the council, solicitor, Gloria, Johnny Anderson, the architect, what's your name, Kyle Robinson, Karen, Stephanie O'Leary. Hello everybody, didn't I? Chris. Thank you.
Check, 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 check. One, two. Um, Mike, if you don't mind keeping your camera off until you get called up so that people don't end up seeing you.
Sure, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just want to advise you, there was a motion to close the executive session. It was motion to seal the executive session minutes. There was one vote taken. It was on item A, which was the opioid national litigation. Uh, there was eight. Uh, it was passed to accept the settlement from eight generic manufacturers as recommended by the opioid council. So that's what the vote was. We stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance against the flag of the United States of America. In true republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Would you stay standing for a minute? Uh, I want to remember remembering September 11th. On the morning of September 11th, 2001, our nation was forever changed by a series of devastating terrorist attacks that claimed the lives of 2,977 innocent people. This included 2,753 at the World Trade Center in New York City, 184 at the Pentagon, and 40 passengers included aboard flight 93. American Airlines Flight 11 struck the North Tower of the World Trade Center at 8:46 a.m., killing everybody on board and many inside the building. United Airlines Flight 175 hit the South Tower at 9:03 a.m., leading to the collapse of both towers later that morning. At American Airlines Flight 77 crashed into the Pentagon at 9:37 a.m., taking more lives and shaking the heart of our nation's defense. United Airlines Flight 93 was headed towards another target in Washington, D.C., but at 10:03 a.m., brave passengers fought back, causing the plane to crash in a Pennsylvania field. By 10:28 a.m., both towers had collapsed. Today we honor the 2,977 victims, the coverage of first responders, and the resilience of our nation. Now, have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:30.
So, we pulled the mic down pretty? Well, thank you.
Yep. All right. Seven. Proclamations, presentations, acknowledgements. Review, discussion, end or potential action, end or vote. A is the HopeCon Study presentation by Weston and Sampson. Eight is the Hope Pond Study Presentation by Weston and Sampson.
Evening. Thank you for having me here this evening.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name. Is James Reardon. I'm from Weston and Sampson. I'm a senior team leader there in charge of the planning group and was the project manager of the study. This is, uh, of course, the Hope Pond Beach Study, uh, or also Salisbury Beach. I know it's referred to by both names. Um, and of course, it's for your town, Tana, Sichewett. Uh, next slide, please. Right? So, uh, the purpose of this study was to address repeated beach closures. There've been forty nine closures between, uh, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty four. And, uh, we know that those continued over the course of this year as well. Uh, concerns about enterococci, exceedances and aquatic vegetation. So. Um, for those who may not know, enterococci is bacteria. It's a bacteria that's measured, uh, as part of sampling the beach to see whether the beach is safe to be open or not. Um, high levels of enterococci, uh, can be indicative of, um. Bacteria that could be causing diseases. So, um, that's, that's why that, uh, indicator organism is used. And then, of course, community concerns around septic systems, fertilizers, geese, stormwater and livestock as potential sources for these problems. Next slide, please. So this shows the watershed. Excuse me, the watershed draining towards Salisbury Beach at Hope Pond. Uh, and you can see it, see it includes the north branch of the Puxit River from the Gainer Dam downstream to the beach. Uh, contains residential parcels, uh, outfalls and. Of course, some small scale agriculture. In this case, what we mean by small scale agriculture is really backyard agriculture. So. Chicken coops, uh, you know, uh, uh, farm animals that are kept by individuals, sort of like pets. Um, beach recreation areas influenced by both upstream and local pollution sources. So, next slide, please. As I noted at the beginning of this presentation, uh, there's been a sharp increase in the closures since about twenty twenty. Before that, um, there was either no data available or there were some years where there was data available and it was. Maybe, uh, maximum of three closures in a year, many years with zero closures. So, um, you know, typically this beach was being closed, maybe. Maybe, uh, once or twice a year, um, maybe a little more frequently than that, but not much more. And then all of a sudden you can see, uh, from. Uh. And these, uh, I didn't realize these years are reversed from twenty twenty, there were three, uh, closures. And then, uh, between then and twenty twenty four, so between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty four. Uh, there were forty nine closures, as I mentioned before, and pretty consistently ten or more closures, uh, throughout the year. So most free, it was at one year, the most frequently closed beach in Rhode Island, salt water or freshwater. That was twenty twenty four. Um, and of course, the number of beach closures indicates, uh, the possibility of a change in pollution sources in the watershed. Um, so that's what raised the concern. And, um, we also point out that typically Rhode Island beaches close just a couple or three times a year. So consistent with what you were seeing in years prior to twenty twenty. Uh, next slide, please. Sure, sure. So if you look on the graph, it shows twenty twenty four as, uh, having three closures. That should actually be twenty twenty. So if you run these, uh, the years, the calendar years in reverse order as opposed to the order they're shown on the graph. Uh, that would, that would be an accurate depiction. Yep. So potential pollution sources, we looked at onsite wastewater systems, cesspools and septic systems as being a possible source. Uh, stormwater outfalls, but particularly illicit discharges. Um, that refers to, um, things that are discharged to a storm drain that aren't stormwater or groundwater leaking into the pipe. So, um, referring to potential wastewater sources. If there were industrial sources in this area, which there are not, that could be an illicit discharge source. Um, and also, um. Sorry about that. Nutrient runoff, so, uh, runoff, um, from over fertilized lawns and that sort of thing. Uh, we also looked at the PJ Horton, uh, water treatment plant, which is just upstream of this area. Uh, as I mentioned before, uh, potential backyard agriculture sources and other farms in the area. We didn't know how many farms there might be. Going into this study, and so we took a look at that. Um, water fowl like geese, uh, living in the area. And then, uh, as I mentioned a moment ago, fertilizer use as well on lawns.
Fertilizing use that would. I'm. Contribute to. But I would imagine, asking you as an expert, does that also contribute to the. Problem?
That's a great question. So it can because, uh, bacterial will live on the fertilizer. So, um, you know, you can see. You know, um, small amounts of bacteria suddenly blooming, if you will, uh, in the presence of nutrients. Uh, next slide, please. All right. So methods for the review. Um, this was a small study, uh, and really just, um, you know, an initial, uh, attempt to. Um, identify potential sources and figure out recommendations to go forward. So our methods in this case were desktop methods. We were looking at existing, uh, permitting records. Uh, existing data sources like previous plans, uh, et cetera. So again. Uh, onsite wastewater treatment systems, we looked at DEMs repair and permitting records. Uh, stormwater outfalls, similarly, uh, we looked at DEM records as well as local records, uh, for dry weather surveys. Um, stormwater mapping, et cetera. Dry weather survey is a survey that you do when it's not raining of the stormwater outfalls. Uh, and so that any sources that you might see in there are likely dry weather sources. So not the result of, um, uh, additional stormwater and runoff. Um, we looked at the PJ Horton Treatment Plan, as I mentioned, so we. We looked primarily at the permits and the discharge data that have been collected by DEM over the course of the last few years. Um, agriculture, we looked at state records, uh, and local records for farms and livestock. Um, for the beach itself, we used, uh, Rhode Island Department of Health records. And, um. For, uh, precipitation data, we looked at USGS precipitation data. And that's how we figured out whether things were related to dry or wet weather. Uh, next slide, please. Key findings. So, uh, the frequent closures. So Salisbury Beach is clearly an outlier. With having ten to fourteen closures a year over the last four or five years, quite a bit more than the state average of two or three. Um, cesspools in the area. So there are probably about sixty eight remaining cesspools based on, uh, what we could determine from the permit records. So this is a potential significant source of bacteria. A number of these cesspools are pretty close to the river. Um, there, you know, that means that they have, uh, uh, you know, pretty strong opportunity of being able to discharge. To the river that then shows up at the beach, which could be, uh, again, a significant source of bacteria. Um. And, uh, you know, as we know, cesspools are, um, antiquated substandard systems. They haven't been installed, installing cesspools in over fifty years. So, uh, these are very old systems, uh, that remain too. So those are, those are a potential source. There is also a fairly high density of them right along the river. Um. Let's see, stormwater outfalls. So we found three outfalls, uh, that had flow during dry weather. And each of these had, uh, significant bacteria levels and other pollutants of concern too. So, um, so those are a potential problem. We actually ruled those out later because they're far enough away from the beach. Uh, that they'd be unlikely to contribute problems. Um. As far as, uh, uh, avian sources like chickens, geese, et cetera. Um, we looked at those, looking at anecdotal data. Um, there was a period of time, uh, in the, the last few months where the river was very low. Um, and you would have expected that that would, uh, the. And the geese left. And so you would have expected that the levels would have dropped off, but they didn't really. Um, and then as far as PJ Horton goes, it's. We talked with DEM about this and we looked at the permit records. Um, it's just really, uh, very unlikely potential bacteria source.
So, uh. When you mentioned the sixty eight cesspools, how, how do you know whether a house has a cesspool versus a properly designed modern septic system?
Yeah, so great question. So, um. Uh, permit records exist for septic systems, but they don't exist for cesspools. So homes without permit records that are of a certain age are mo- most likely to be on cesspools.
Okay, so you're finding this data out of your paperwork, but what about unlicensed sources such as. People having their washing machine drained directly into the river rather than into their septic system or their cesspool because. It's not a good thing for a cesspool. Was any of that observed that, could you locate any of that by. Traveling on the stream and seeing pipes coming from people's yards into the, the stream that would be questionable?
Yeah, so another great question. So it certainly would be possible. Uh, doing some sort of a watershed walkover or doing, um, observations from the stream. To potentially find some of those sorts of sources. That wasn't part of the study because it was just a desk, desktop study. Um, but that actually, something like that is a recommendation at the end of, uh, the report.
Excuse me, I have a question. So when it's tested, when, when the water is tested by, I would assume the state comes out and tests the water. To find out if it's contaminated or not. Is it only that private or the only Salisbury Beach? It's not, are they testing all around? The pond and in the, because there's private beaches there as well.
Yeah, so, um, excuse me, Department of Health only looks at the public beaches?
So it's just that at whole pond at, at the, and, and bother upstream, we don't know.
Well, so in the last few months, there's been sampling done through the watershed watch program, actually by your conservation commission. And so there, um, you know, there has been some recent sampling done. So it gives us, um, some inkling of what might be going on, but, um. That isn't, that isn't focused on sources. It's more focused on, um, the overall quality of water. In, in the, uh, North Branch River and in the pond. Yeah.
Good question. You said it's sixty eight. Work. You said sixty eight cesspools. Uh, the law is, as far as I know, is when a house is sold, you've only got so many months. To have a septic put in.
Um, so DEM requires that for certain, for certain parts of Rhode Island, mostly coastal parts and areas that. Um, uh, are near drinking water supplies and other sensitive receptors.
Not mandatory for everybody?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. No, no, it is not. No, that's, uh, Massachusetts.
I, I disagree. I'm a realtor and I was, I was been taught, I took classes, constantly take classes that. When I show a piece of property that has a cesspool, I have to notify the buyer that they have twelve months to move that, to replace that cesspool with a septic system. Or connect with the, um, the municipal, uh, sewer system.
Um, so that might be different for, um, a tie-in in a municipality where they have a sewer and they have to tie in.
No, no, they, they, they have to, we have twelve, it says right in our paperwork, they have twelve months to, to take that cesspool. And do away with it, either a septic system if there's no municipal system or a municipal system if it's available.
That's, again, that's only, sir, that's only in certain areas of Rhode Island. It's not Rhode Island wide. It's not statewide.
Our paperwork doesn't differentiate.
It, it may not. So there may be industry standards that you guys have set up.
That's what we were told.
Yeah.
But I have a question besides that. Can you differentiate bacteria being human waste as opposed to, um.
Um, follow.
Animal. Yeah, animal.
Yeah, you can to an extent. So you can do it a couple of different ways. Um. Uh, it's kind of a. It's not a super accurate way to do it, not a super reliable way to do it. But if you take ammonia and surfactants at the same time that you take the bacteria. You can, um, you can figure out if ammonia and surfactants are present. Um, ammonia is typically only present when there are warm-blooded animals around.
Far right.
Yeah, and, um. And then the surfactants are only present when there are soaps.
Right.
Um, so if you find ammonia, surfactants and high bacteria together, that's very likely, uh, human waste source.
Okay.
Or so likely, the, the way to do it like really dis positively is with, um, a DNA sample.
So the, the, my, my, my thought process is if we take these samples repeatedly. And find that they relate to humans as opposed to, um, organic from animals. We, we begin to track back to probably failed cesspools.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
In regards to the cesspools, so I mean, to boil it down, it seems like our major issue would be that. Based on this. Our major issue would be something like that.
Yeah.
Um. Where, where would DEM come into play? Um. If we made an appeal for water quality at this, at this pond for, for our kids to use for recreation. Would they, would they make any kind of determination for these homeowners to either force the town to make. Uh, us bring in sewers and or them replace cesspools. Based on quality of water for the town? Or is this kind of a. We wait till they fail, they're forced by DEM to replace and we never use our pond again. Because we can't tell them to connect or replace their cesspool. Do you know what I'm trying to get at?
Absolutely.
It's roundabout and.
No, it's not at all. No, so DEM won't do that for the town. However, the town can pass their own requirements, um, say like a wastewater management district. Um, which years ago, I know you guys were talking about back in the early two thousands. Um, and, uh, under a wastewater management district, you can, um. You can require inspections, uh, routine maintenance inspections, point of transfer inspections and, um. Uh. Through that process, require, um. Either systems that are in disrepair, failed in some way, uh, or, uh, are substandard at point of sale. You can require those upgrades.
If, if that were the case, would that be kind of like. And, and this would be my point of view, I guess, would be like the town over policing how somebody uses their house. Like, what would your opinion on that be if we were to tell people, hey, you didn't do the required maintenance for us to open our recreation pond? Like, we, we find them, like, do you know what I mean? Is it more regulation? Is it more?
So it's an, there is enabling legislation at the state level for wastewater management districts, which is just what you're talking about.
Okay.
So it's not, I wouldn't use the term over policing. There, there might be some people who would feel that way, but.
That's, that's, I kind of just looking for an opinion on that, not necessarily what the real answer.
And there's, there's no grandfather clause on that where you have a cesspool. And.
No, because the system.
Grandfathered in.
So.
Oh, sorry to interrupt. Cindy, Chair Francisco, I'm the chair of the Conservation Commission. Um, I just wanted to mention, uh, in, in response to Jason's question, there are several municipalities. That have established their own wastewater management plans and programs. That, that are doing exactly that, are going out to, to, to everybody's house in their town. Inspecting their septic systems. If they're finding problems in substandard systems, they are requiring that they replace them. There are several communities that have been doing that for, uh, one that I know of for at least ten years.
Yeah, so, um, since ninety six, actually, was the first one in Rhode Island. Um, I worked at DEM at that time and I helped to get that passed. Um, so there are, well, half a dozen, I'd say, active ones.
That I know of, I mean, since I've left DEM, I've lost track, so I don't know.
There's probably another half dozen that have it on their books, but don't really do much with it.
Are those, um, townwide reviews or can they be isolated to an area?
You can do it either way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well. Hmm. Does the head of councilman, yeah, I've seen him talk here for a minute over here because he's got the law right there.
Sure.
Sure. Yeah, I I'm I again, I'm not trying to play a gutter game or anything, but I just happened to Google uh and and I'm looking at a Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Office of Water Resources, um Rhode Island Septic, excuse me, Rhode Island Cesspool Act FAQ from September first of twenty fifteen. And it says all cesspools pools in Rhode Island are subject to the Rhode Island Cesspool Act of two thousand and seven and will need to be replaced. The timing for when you will be required to replace your cesspool is determined by the following. And it lists four items. Number one, if your property is subject to sale or transfer, the cesspool must be removed from service within one year of closing date. And then it talks about having a a failed cesspool. And then then if you have a cesspool that services a non-residential facility, and then it talks about if your cesspool is located within one of three designated areas, your cesspool must be replaced immediately. One of them is within two hundred feet of an inland edge of all shoreline features, bordering tidal water areas, which you spoke about.
Yep.
Within two hundred feet of all public wells or within two hundred feet of a water body with an intake for a drinking water supply. And I I recall um when the um sea slip uh yeah, the slip came through because the town put in um regulations to allow for financing for for individuals in the town. So I I thought that all cesspools do have to be replaced if you sell or transfer the property within a year.
Yeah, so there there may be a local requirement like that.
That, so the cesspool phase, that was another phase that went into effect in twenty fifteen.
But DEM, DEM doesn't enforce that.
DEM doesn't enforce it. The enforcement lies with the municipality.
Enforcement's always, I guess, an issue, right? But um I I that it's it's our understanding, I think to to the council's question about um the uh the how many of those sixty eight cesspools may have been subject to a transfer recently and and whether or not they've been upgraded.
Well, and so if you recall, um I had recommended last year that we upgrade our wastewater management plan. Um, and I I believe that the town engineer had submitted a um an estimate as to how much it would cost. But I don't think that was ever voted or approved. Um, so I mean, that is one thing that really should be done. And what should be included in that is that somebody needs to be looking at these these uh real estate transfers and if those cesspools have been upgraded.
Is that up there, John?
Yes.
Yeah, it's up there.
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're looking at it.
Yeah.
That was actually a requirement of the sea slip program.
Yeah, the sislip program is set up so that the way you get um a loan is through the development of an onsite wastewater management plan. There's no requirement to update it, but.
Correct.
But it has been.
So the one that we have was was finalized, I think it was in twenty twenty. And it was only when I got on the Conservation Commission that I realized we had never finalized it and that as a result we weren't eligible for the sea slip program. So Dave Provostel and I worked on it to get it approved by DEM and that's how we were able to get sea slip program moving forward.
So for starters, though, we could look at these sixty eight cesspools and determine what's transacted since the law and and work with those folks to get that.
Yep.
You've got one percent septic loans and your battery says bad.
I guess that's.
That's later on the agenda.
But we got low low-cost septic loan pro.
Uh huh.
So anyways, we we have opportunities to help residents, you know, do the switch over. We so the very near-term thing we can do is is work with those sixty eight to make sure we know who needs to replace them. Simple as that. That I mean, whether or not, you know, updating the wastewater, that's we have to talk about the cost, we have to do that, Joe takes time. This doesn't take that much time.
It's gonna do it though.
My word's fine.
Right, right, you would address those.
Yeah, well, I know you have to inspect them. I think it's a matter of just determining which addresses those are.
And see the records to see with properties of soul.
And which versus which have been sold.
Airing them with the list, yes. But again, it's gonna do it. Technically, it would be a building official that does that kind of work. But let's suppose there's a property that's been there for fifty years and it hasn't sold. I mean, you know, if there's no records, there's paper records, right, or no records, then you'd want to look at those as well.
You're right, you're right. But at least the 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 near-term thing is if you find out if you find out that thirty of the sixty eight have sold and they've not upgraded their systems, that's where you at least start. And that would be the building official's office.
So there was a couple of months back, um I was requested by uh folks in the town to um to help with a SNEP grad grant, uh Southern New England um uh program grant. And um so we put together a scope of work that would follow up on the study. It included doing uh inspections at, we didn't know how many how homes there were at the time that might have cesspools. So we recommended fifty uh inspections. Um, so that would involve going to the house, doing a pump out, taking a look at the system and seeing, you know, what state of function it was in. If it was a cesspool, it could just be remen- uh recommended that that was um replaced.
And that could be well be the case, but I'm saying if if you find that thirty of the sixty eight have transacted and not been replaced, you don't even have to do that. Those are the ones who say you've got to change it.
Yeah.
So now you're down to thirty eight homes that you might have had inspections.
I was just going to propose, say that's eight of them and there's sixty left. Are we still looking to create this district to do something here? Or are we looking for a town-wide thing? Because ultimately what we'd be signing on for is getting funding to afford this program. And again, are we focused just on hope? Are we focused on anywhere else in the town? Like, could they look at us picking on them because we put a district there only for our beach? I I don't know, I I don't care. Whatever we agree to is what we agree to. I'm just trying to further that conversation.
As far as I know, as I know, it's the only town beach we have. I mean, I I could be wrong, but the beach.
I mean, I'm I'm okay with this, you know, if I.
There's plenty of water in situ.
Yeah, most of them by the reservoir, you're not supposed to be in it, so, yeah.
I mean, I I think what precipitated this is we want to use our beach, right? Yeah, so that's why I'm asking functionally, would we be moving this?
I mean, it would seem to me that first, the first step is to identify how many of the sixty eight have transacted since the law went in place. Secondly, you can you can, we can determine how to do a review of the other, you know, systems, the leftover systems. And then thirdly, we can talk about putting together some type of a district, you know, district.
Yeah, so you understand it's very unlikely that any of those sixty eight have been repaired or replaced since the law went in. Um, with the exception of maybe over the last six or eight months.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you think that their majority of the reason we're getting the bacteria or is?
It is, to be honest with you, it's pretty hard to say without more data.
Yeah.
Personally, I think.
Yeah, reading your report certainly suggested that it is. Out of all of the causes, this seems like the most likely.
Out of the things that we looked at, it seems like the most likely. It's pretty hard to say what the levels of bacteria that you're seeing and um with with the absence of you know, more sampling data like around ammonia and surfactants, that sort of thing, to figure out whether the it's really likely to be a human source.
So that is one of the things that I realized pretty quickly when I started doing sampling through the URI Watershed Watch Program is that we were lacking in all the parameters that we needed to be able to figure out exactly what's going on. Yes, we have bacteria.
But it'll be coming from a lot of places.
It it there are ways to figure out where it's coming from with, you know, minimal additional sampling. But unfortunately, the URI Watershed Watch Program does not include those parameters. And I've actually, because it's funded by DEM, I was actually at a meeting at DEM yesterday and I brought that up and they they were aware of it already and um I think now we're more aware and are willing to maybe do something about it, but that's not going to help us right now.
Can you recommend, Cindy Cindy, can you recommend? I got it on.
No. Yeah. So I mean, that's.
Can you recommend some companies that could do this testing for us?
Yes, our our town planning contractor can do it for us.
Well, I didn't know. I mean, he said he did mostly desktop. I'm not sure if they did in the field also.
For the study.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can come up with some sort of determination as to where this source of bacteria is. Okay.
Do we think that this um so the dam, that the Providence water releases water from the dam, which you know, kind of wishes things down, right? Do you think that they've stopped? You know, uh releasing more water from the dam or do you do we know how many gallons they? Benz water releases nine million gallons a day. That is consistent. It has not. Always been. It has always been that way and and they have not had any periods where they have not um released that much. The one thing I can say about the data that I've been collecting, I have a background sample that is up gradient from any homes. And those numbers are dramatically lower than the numbers that we're seeing down gradually. So so up near the, we have a dam. Not that far up. Um, I really, I just go just past where the houses are. And while there are some low levels of bacteria that are showing up in in that sample, again, it could be from other sources, most likely that uh we know that other sources are contributing. Right. But what are causing the high levels at the beach and 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 high levels that we're seeing in some of the other samples that I'm collecting?
The bacterial, the bacterial samples that we're seeing that are, you know, close to the beach, that's been happening for about the last five years. So um I don't think it's a change, likely to be a change in Providence water. Uh, the the other thing I'd say here, regardless of um what water quality sampling says, the cesspools that are out there, again, they're over fifty years old. Yeah, yeah, it'd be good to, it would be good to repair and replace them.
I mean, it seems to me that we've got to do the next year and look at these cesspools and whether it's retain you or that's the very least we have to do. Um, and uh I would ask that something be put on the agenda to look into that. Um, so get a, you know, get a get a sense of what that would cost. I don't think we have to put it out for RFP. I'm trying to think if we would or not.
So if we, if we go down this a little bit further, we have the costs here. So um so there's looking at the three stormwater outfalls, five, six and nineteen more thoroughly. This includes a watershed walkover and pulling together a a report and um that would probably be around ten thousand dollars. Uh, a wet weather sampling study to capture stormwater impacts and have a better understanding of that. We'd probably do two events that would be around fifty thousand. Um, waterfowl observations, we're pretty sure that the waterfowl are actually not a significant problem here. Um, and uh any observations of waterfowl that would be done um could be done without any cost because Conservation Commission folks are out there regularly. Um, if we're out there doing sampling, we'll look to see if there are geese and things too additionally. Um, groundwater monitoring wells in the watershed. So this is a way you can really figure out whether it's likely to be from a wastewater source or not. Because you sink a well into the ground about twenty feet, a micro well, and you take the groundwater samples. If the groundwater has ammonia and surfactants and bacteria, there's no other place for that to have come from than the wastewater source. Um, so that would be maybe as part of one of these other studies too. Um, the OWTS or uh septic system and cesspool inspections and pumpouts uh at up to fifty homes, probably about fifteen thousand dollars. That assumes about uh three hundred bucks a home. And um then public awareness, um we think it's important as part of any one of these programs. If you're going to encourage people to repair and replace their systems, it's fairly expensive to manage their property better. Um, you want to do that in the context of some sort of public awareness program that could probably be done through Northern Rhode Island Conservation District.
What do the um, what do the cesspool pumpouts involve?
Um, so it would involve getting out there with a pumper and uh then doing inspection of the system once it's pumped to do a proper inspection.
You need to do that to do the inspection.
Yeah, if it's a if it's a septic system, if it's a septic system, meaning it has a septic tank, you want to be able to look inside the tank. And to, yep, good, good look inside the tank, you need to have it pumped out. But if if it's a cesspool, you just observe that it's a cesspool and recommend replacement.
But out of out of all of these, the one that seems to be the most bang for your buck is the cesspool inspections and pumpouts.
Yeah.
Rather than these thousands and thousands of dollars for the remote possibility that it could be something else.
Yeah, well, thank you. Probably the one other thing that I might recommend on this is um if so it depends which direction you want to go. If what you want to do is a wastewater management district and maintain the uh septic systems out there, but just upgrade them and get them to better quality, then I'd probably recommend that second to last bullet and don't worry about too much of this other stuff. If on the other hand, you think that um the other septic systems in the area are perhaps installed in groundwater and causing a problem too, and that really the right thing to do is sewer the area, um then you want to be sure before you do that because sewer in this area would be ten million, thirty million somewhere in that neighborhood.
But something we could do near term is the is the what, the second to last bullet there.
Yeah.
And and we may not even have to have, yeah, and we, right, the bottom one. And we may not have to hit fifty homes. If we find out that, you know, again, thirty of the sixty eight have transacted since the 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 new law said they had to upgrade the system in a year, they've got to replace them.
Yeah.
That was that many, but there may be a few. Um, I'm I'm also going to mention something because I'm not on that river a lot now. Um, first to answer Peter's question about any illicit discharges of of gray water, you know, laundry water, there are there are pipes coming from people's properties that are discharging water. From what we can tell, it's um, there are just some pumps pumping water out of their basement. It's clean water that's coming out. Um, we we've we've looked very carefully and any water that we see coming out is pretty clean. The other concern that I have is that a lot of these homes have very small lots.
Yeah.
Tiny lots and their backyards are ten feet from the river. More than likely, that's where the cesspool is. They're never going to be able to put a septic system there. And they most likely can't put one in their front yard either because that's where their well is. Or maybe they'll have a neighbor's well that's ten feet away.
Maybe they'll have to put a tank in and pump the tank out regularly. I mean, I, you know, I mean.
Well, it there's they there is, there were those new systems, Cindy, the above-ground systems that processed up the waste within the system, but they're immensely expensive. Well, yeah.
That's in the wastewater management plan that we do have is that those are supposed to be monitored because they need maintenance on an annual basis. And if people are not maintaining them on an annual basis, they're not functioning properly.
Right.
And it was up to the town to 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 do that monitoring. And we actually set up a program, but it never got followed through with. So no one's ever monitored those systems to make sure that they're being maintained properly.
Right, yes.
But the other thing I will mention is that even if there's room to to put one of these septic systems, you can't get equipment there because of the elevation differences. There's, I mean, there's no way to even get in there to install them. So I think that there's logistical issues with quite a few homes um as to how they could possibly get a septic system.
One percent logistical issues, we can still do an enormous amount of good. Uh, so it may not be perfect, but.
And I've mentioned this before, is something to consider that would would, I think, help these people to be able to get new se- systems installed is to consider bringing public water into these neighborhoods. The water line is powered out. It's not that far. There's funding out there to extend water lines. Um, if you could get these homes on public water, then they don't have to worry about where their well is or where their neighbor's well is if they need to replace their septic system.
So um, there there is some precedence for, you know, taking uh an area that's this that is this constrained space-wise and installing individual systems, installing onsite wastewater treatment systems um right here in Rhode Island, which is uh the town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island. They did this along an area called The Cove um in Portsmouth and Island Park. And, you know, homes on postage stamp lots. Um, they managed to figure out how to put in some sort of wastewater treatment system. In some cases, it was a uh, you know, a tight tank that was pumped on a regular basis. So that it is possible. It's not super convenient. It's a lot cheaper than uh a sewer system.
Now, I I've actually studied that, the one of the systems you're talking about, it's an Elgin system. Um, it's had its ups and downs. That's a compact septic system.
Yeah, so that's that's certainly, that's an IA system, uh innovative and alternative system. That's one of the ones that's available. Um, there are a bunch of other. There are a bunch of other ones, about a dozen of them, maybe more than that.
They also require a lot of maintenance.
They do.
Yes.
So for towns that are pushing in the direction of having lots of these kind of INA systems in an area that's concerned like this. I would pretty strongly recommend doing a wastewater management district to make sure that those systems are being inspected and taken care of on a regular basis. Because otherwise, as Cindy is saying, the operation and maintenance will fall off. People will stop doing it. Property gets transferred, next donor doesn't care as much as the original one did. Or they don't understand and, you know, maintenance just falls by the wayside.
So Jim, you do have a recommendation there to add ammonia and surfactants to the sampling.
That's right.
That's going on. Is that just the analytical cost or is that also factor in?
That's the analytical.
So that's the lab cost.
Yeah, that's right.
So I would have to collect those samples and deliver them to a separate laboratory than where I'm delivering my other samples.
You might be able to do it at the same lab.
No, I, I deliver it to URI. URI does everything.
Yeah, so there are a couple of labs in the area that do this. Uh, there's Bow Labs in Cranston.
You've got a master price agreement that that we could use if we wanted to add that on.
They're the ones I'd recommend. They're, I think they're the best lab.
Wastewater Management District volunteer. Sounds like you're a perfect expert for that position and, and we'd really appreciate it.
But no, because that's the kind of thing that your town engineer and your town planner should do. That we don't have. I'm, I'm putting in an awful lot of time already and it's, it's time for me to stop saying no. I will be more than glad to consult, but I'm not going to take the lead.
I think we should charge our, this into the building official's office in terms of the second to last bullet point. In terms of identif, taking the sixty-eight identified, you know, septic systems or cesspools. Find out if they've transacted at all the last twenty years. Start with that. And, and then consider, boy, the, the second to last, you know, bullet.
And as far as the last bullet, when the time is right, let's, let's decide when that is. But I will be glad to work with the Northern Rhode Island Conservation District to start to do some community awareness. We can, we can do meetings, you know, we can hand out information. There's a lot that, that, that we can do. So, you know, but I think it's, we're still in early stages right now to get started with that, but.
So I don't know if emotions are necessary here as opposed to just simply tasking the building officials' office to just to look into those cesspools. And then to, I suppose, you know, get a more formalized, once we get a sense of what that involves. Get a form, more formalized proposal on the cesspool inspections to find out which ones are failed, the ones that haven't sold.
Go ahead.
All right.
All right. If we could go to the next slide, there are a couple more of these items. So updating your onsite wastewater management plan, thing that we've been talking about was last updated in two thousand four. Uh, probably about twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars in that neighborhood. Continuing the water quality monitoring through URI Watershed Watch. Of course, that doesn't really have an expense to it, except of course of Cindy's time.
No, there, and it is, there is a cost. Yeah, it's fifteen hundred dollars a year. Not a lot for the sampling that we're doing.
Okay. Uh, expand septic system upgrades and funding support. That would probably be through the SISLIP program. So that would be likely now growth of that first bullet. Uh, and then consider sewer-ing and some sort of schematic design for the area. I don't know whatever happened with that SNAP grant, but if that was successful in moving on to the next step. A lot of these items are included as, as part of that. And so the town wouldn't have to pay for them.
Addresses of these fifty homes that you can share with the, the building inspector's office. So we can do the research.
Yeah, we can, we didn't pick out addresses of homes, but we do have a map that shows approximately where they're located, where we think they're located.
Okay. How far back from your, where do you go? When you consider a home is hundred feet.
So we. The sixty-eight that we're talking about were within the watershed that I showed at the beginning. Uh, keep going up. There you go. So all the red ones.
So some of them are, are quite a distance away from the river. Um, I think certainly concentrating on the ones that are closer to the river initially would, would be a best first step.
Yeah, and you can see, as I mentioned, there's pretty high density of them right next to the river, just upstream of the beach a bit.
Um, we used to have a, we had formed a committee for water. You know, tying in the, the public water to that area. Is that committee still active or is that?
It never met. It never met.
A little bit.
But it's, it's telling me that, but it's still active. This has been six years, right? So is it still active? It's still an active committee then? That's, that's all I'm asking. All right.
So be a little careful about tying in public water here. When you tie in public water, it's going to drive water use up.
Yeah, exactly. That's what happens. But yeah.
Probably doubles or triples per person.
That's a good word.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. It's, it's significant. That's one of the arguments for bringing water in a North Situate. It's going to create more of a problem. So we've got cesspools here, so.
Yeah, so you want to, you want to consider the two together. If you're going to bring water in, you want to figure out how to get rid of those cesspools.
See, having this recommendation was that, you know, a sewer study, well, remember we have the Hope Village Sewer feasibility study that we've been trying to get funded for two years now. Which I think would be another good step forward to try to figure out what the best way is to move forward on this.
Although that, it's hard to picture that sewer district getting out that far. Because I mean, that would, God, I mean, it'd take it up fifty percent more than the number that was kicked around.
True.
I mean, it's a very.
But when we, when we looked at like the original, what area it would cover, you know, it would cover the, the most, you know, densely area of a Hope Village. But then also with the option of tying in places further out.
Right, but we were talking, it was like a sixteen to eighteen million dollar number and it stopped at Brown Ave. It wasn't even close to getting up here. I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
You, you're talking about an enormous number.
No, you would do probably a small diameter system up here and you pump it to the, you know, the other location you were talking about. I agree with you that this is probably, soaring this area is probably ten to thirty million dollars.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
I think we did have one more slide on there. Uh, yeah, maybe two more. So conclusion, conclusions, final findings, I guess. Salisbury Beach is one of the most frequently closed beaches in Rhode Island or has been over about the last five years. Cesspools and septic systems are a primary ongoing concern, sixty-eight remaining cesspools. Nutrients driving aquatic vegetation growth in Hope Pond, that's pretty evident. We're not entirely sure whether the nutrients are wastewater in origin or fertilizer or something else. Or maybe some combination of those things is most likely. Stormwater and animal, stormwater and animals contribute, but probably less significantly. And can't quite see the end. I think it says dry weather sources, yeah, matter more than wet weather events at this point. And then next steps we'd recommend prior, is what we've been talking about. Prioritize cesspool and septic system inspections in the watershed. Launch community outreach on septic system upgrades and water quality. Coordinate with the URI Watershed Watch Program to continue to expand that a bit. And potentially add other constituents like the ammonia and surfactants. Apply for external funding. Mentioned SNAP and DEM grants here. You really, you want to try and avoid doing this on your own financially. And then integrate findings into a future wastewater and open space planning. So, you know, I kind of go back on this a little bit up to the septic systems. The, it's not an easy road. It's, it can be kind of a long road a ho to do it this way. But it's more efficient in dollars is to work with the existing property owners out there to upgrade their systems. Get better systems out there. If they need to go to tight tanks, maybe go to tight tanks. And have a wastewater management district to make sure that whatever's getting installed actually gets inspected and maintained.
I, I have a question. I, I don't know if you have the answer with regards to applying for external funding. I, I seem to recall many years ago USDA had some, some grant funding for smaller sewer districts. They had, at the time, I think, multiple millions of dollars of grants for, if you set up a, a small district and it was very size specific. Do you know if those grant programs still exist?
I think they still exist, but they're a lot diminutive.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
B, acknowledgement of the Situate Police Department receiving the 2025 National Association of the School Resource Officers NASRO Model Agency Award. Chief, welcome up here. Want to read this to you? It's a certificate of commendation in recognition of earning the prestigious designation of 2025 National Association of the School Resource Officers Model Agency Award. The Situate Town Council wishes to express its pride and sincere congratulations to the Situate Police Department. Whereas the Situate Town Council recognizes your outstanding personal effort in earning this designation and the true asset you are to the town of Situate. We set our hand onto the certificate, which is tendered this eleventh day of September, 2025. With the congratulations and recognition of the Situate Town Council and all the citizens of the town of Situate. By order of Town Council, Charles A. Collins, Jr., Town Council President, attested by Margaret M. Long, Town Clerk. Congratulations. Okay. Item C, Treasurer and Finance Director Presentation Regarding the General Fund Balance and What the Purpose of It Is.
Good evening. So I can go through the fund balance numbers that were reported in the last completed audit for you. I think there are some slides just to go along. The first one is of the general balance sheet and on the bottom, there's a highlighted line of unassigned fund balance. You can see that the general fund, unassigned fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty-four was five point one million. It was a non-major governmental funds, negative balance of six hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred. So I want to explain what that is comprised of. And on the next slide.
Karen, before you do that, I, I, could you just, there's a misperception in the community that we've got five million dollars of cash. That's, you know, they're, that, that fund balance numbers being translated and we've got five million dollars for the cash. When in fact, at this point in time, it was a million, one sixty-one. Right? I mean, that's an important distinction. That there's, there's no tie between the us, the fund balance and the amount of cash we have.
That's, that's right.
Okay, as you go across the top with cash, you end up with almost four point eight million dollars. Can you talk about this non-major governmental funds cash, three point six million dollars? Where's the, is that tied up? It's committed to projects and things like that?
Yeah, there are the bond funds, the ongoing projects.
Right.
From time to time that we have going on and the, the ins and outs of those funds.
Right, so the key thing here again is it, 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 June thirty, twenty-four, there might be five million dollars of fund balance roughly fund. But we only have a million two in cash.
At that time.
It's a very big difference at that time. It's been lower than that. That's why we have tans.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Can you go to the next page and I'll orient that so we can, okay. So this number of six hundred sixty-seven thousand is comprised of some of its town special revenue funds, school revenue funds and capital project funds. So the number of the twenty-two thousand, seven forty-seven, for instance, is an ongoing grant with the police department for body camera, body worn cameras. So that's a grant that's spent and then is reimbursed in the next fiscal year. So as of this point in time shows a deficit, but in effect, the next year is reimbursed. So that's a wash. The next column, the school special revenue funds. These are ongoing rolling projects that the schools have on, ongoing. The capital project funds, six hundred and thirty, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand is the number I want to focus on it and explain what comprises this number. Because some of this is a real project, the deficit that we need to address. The next slide is going to show you the part of this number. We had an animal shelter bond fund. That project ended up having a deficit of eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. So that's part of this number. If you want to slide, go to the next one, the big. The biggest part of the negative balance is the police station fund. That project was over budget by three hundred eighty-nine thousand that you can see there. In the last column, the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank Loan, two hundred and thirty-two thousand is part of a, a general obligation project, the bond fund, that we, we spent the funds before the, and this was actually the the school's fire alarm systems that we, the project had started before the bond was issued. So we paid out the funds that got the project going. When the bond was issued, these funds are replenished. So this is a wash. This is, these funds have been replenished and it's not, this is not a deficit fund.
So we're really looking at about four hundred K based on the two numbers you pointed out.
That's correct.
Overages on bonds that need to be funded.
Yeah, yes, the two, the animal shelter and the police station instruction.
I'm just rounding it.
Three hundred ninety-eight thousand. So that's the number that the, that should be, would be ongoing from year to year until there's some resolution to it.
Thank you.
That's all.
Hey, I just want to address the misconception that this fund balance is a pool of money that's available to, to arbitrarily spend on operating expenses that should be funded through levy, levying of taxes. Uh, we and the financial community have a, 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 an understanding that the town of Situate is going to maintain a certain level of fund balance. And we unofficially have always assumed ten percent was a reasonable number. But more importantly, it's consistency. We don't dip into that fund balance to draw it down. Other communities have gotten into serious problems when they do that. We should maintain that ten percent minimally and demonstrate to the rating agencies that Situate is a well-managed community, that levies taxes when necessary to fund projects that the town council and the community wants. But for anybody to stand and suggest that we use assets to fund ongoing projects without funding them through an appropriate revenue stream is, is demonstrating a clear misunderstanding of the concept of municipal accounting. There are communities that David Farrar here, our bond council certainly can address the importance of stability and consistency in our budgeting process. But what, what's happening in this community and particularly at the financial town meeting where an operating expense was being funded from a, the use of a fund balance. And there, there's a misconception there that this is an appropriate use of, of that money. There was a discussion, I think, last Tuesday at a school committee meeting that, you know, arbitrarily we should use fund balance to fund a concession stand at one of the athletics fields. Once again, an inappropriate consideration of the use of fund balance. It, it, fund accounting is not an easy thing. It's it fund accounting is not an easy thing to understand. More importantly, this discussion to the table today were these two funds that hadn't been closed yet. Those funds need to be closed and there's another agenda item where we're seeking your guidance as to how you want to close them. If you want to close them in one swooping adjusting entry, you're taking a $400,000 hit against your fund balance and reducing that below the 10%. We're our last analysis, we were at 9.5%. We need to move that up. My proposal is that we amortize that over time and and demonstrate to the rating agencies once again, the prudent management of our finances through the recognition that we that is revenue to to restore that fund balance. It it's not a simple concept, but it's a concept that we have to understand and we have to hold the course to. Do I have any questions?
I actually have a question. So this is June 30th, 2024 or is that June 30th, 2025?
No, 24, 24, the 25 audit is there. Now, as far as the
Is that still the same?
We're going to say that's the number that we're going to talk about because that's an audited number. We're still in the midst of of completing our 25 audit. And if we're on if we're on budget and we don't have a deficit, that will be your fund balance at the end of this fiscal year.
Outstanding items.
Outstanding items. The station was left open because of the issues at the station and those costs were not budgeted in a capital budget. They were not budgeted in an operating budget. So it was an appropriate accounting of those expenditures needed to correct or modify certain construction decisions that were made at the police station. So it looks like, and I'll defer to the chief, it looks like we've got a stable building now and we've got no significant expenditures to consider.
But we basically have three issues here. One is the misperception that we've there's $5 million of cash.
That's correct.
Okay, secondly, there's the amortization that you're suggesting closing out the negative. But there's also the headwind going forward of continued use of fund balance.
I think I've addressed that. I said that's
Gloucester, they they ran up on the rocks in that town and they've had to lay off numerous, you know, people out of the school system.
Little Compton was a perfect example.
Their taxes up by 12% this year and is probably going up.
I thought it was I thought it was higher than 12%. I just read the article.
I thought it was 12.
Yeah, but but it was a significant amount because they were continuing to use on the balance every year. There was a comment where we've done that in the past. Let me explain to you the reason we've taken a budget and used a fund balance, put a plug.
Small.
A small amount because enable to make certain we do as good a job as levying taxes as we can. If it doesn't snow, we have a surplus. If it doesn't, you know, in the school budget, if they 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 budget for X number of kids in special education and they don't get those kids, they're going to have a surplus. Assuming the other line items are balanced. So we based on experience, we say, can we balance in this budget by $200,000 so that we don't tax the taxpayers at 200,000? Well, if we're successful at the end of the year, great. Successful, we can make that up. That becomes a makeup in the subsequent year or if you admit it like those other communities, then that becomes a time bomb that you're creating. So position to June 30th fiscal year, we used fund balance to to manage our cash flow, to manage that process. And and we did it very successfully.
And after meeting with bond, you know,
Bond council.
The the rating agencies, they all agreed with that.
Thing was just reading rating agency report, we had a double A rating. The one thing the rating agencies consistently say, a stable environment, a stable community, well run, fiscally managed community. And that's because we understand the significance of raising taxes when we have to raise taxes, trying to control costs. And above all, trying to maintain a reasonable fund balance. 10% is where we are, 10% is, excuse me, 9.5%, 10% we think we should be at. That's very, very low. I mean, I'd like to see 15 and then it was there 20%. So, you know, maintain the 10 and the rating agencies might continue to look favorably on us. Stop funding arbitrarily expenditures out of fund balance and will certainly suffer the consequences. I'd like David just to make a couple of comments as our bond counsel because he certainly aware.
Sure.
So so in addition to to Tim's point about how we don't have 5 million. One of the things I remember and it's seared into my head is constituents saying that we've overtaxed them to get to the 5 million. So I just want to pose it like how you guys live your own lives. If you don't have a savings account and your car breaks, you're kind of in dire straits. If you don't have a savings account and you take on a car loan that's being paid from your savings account, whoa. You never do that in your own personal life. Ultimately, that's what we did when we voted to use fund balance for an operation is we're paying a car payment out of your savings account. Eventually, when that savings account goes away, when you go to borrow, what's your interest rate? 10 times what it used to be because you don't have any backing. You don't have any fiscal responsibility. So if you want to take the coin that we're overtaxed and we should spend some money, you're ultimately going to put us into the point that Tim put mentioned about Gloucester about coming up with laying off services. That's the other side of this is do we cut what we do for our residents? Because a few people think we either overtax them or we have $5 million to hand away. We do not. Like I worked as a finance director at government and it's one of the reasons I ran is because I relatively understand this stuff. And if we were to just write a check for a million dollars, next time we borrow, we don't just pay back 150K in interest, we pay back 400K. Because we don't have a fiscal backing that says we're responsible to go to Ted's point. So I I don't, I don't like to hear that we're overtaxed. I also don't like to hear that we're fiscally irresponsible. I mean, every year we get a certificate of excellence in reporting it. It doesn't mean we misreport. It means we report more accurate than accurately than most people. Yeah. Is the goal that you have no major concerns. But to to look at having 5 million and and just throwing it away for car payments based on my example, I don't think is fiscally responsible.
If we if we throw another simple example, it's assume we're buying a million dollar town hall. We borrow $800,000 and we raise taxes for $200,000. What's our fund balance? Our fund balance is basically the difference between the asset we have acquired, the million dollars and the 800,000 we borrowed. $100,000 we put in to 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 show your extreme. And from accounting instruction point of view, fund balance is the most difficult course to teach because conceptually it's the hardest to 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 try to understand. So I hope I've answered the questions. I'll ask David just to make some comments as far as the significance of maintaining stability. That's the key stability in our our fiscal management and and also the importance of fund balance in the equation. And and also probably give us some thoughts on some of the other communities that have reached critical issues, critical status because of their poor management.
So I would just echo those comments from conversations with rating agencies. Conversations with rating agencies from my other clients, they're looking at wanting to get far beyond beyond your rating. Fund balances of 15 and just recently they quoted, they said, well, our AAA rated communities in other parts of the country have 40% fund balances and things like that. And the perpetual rating rate, taking of money, running a deficit every year upon year. You know, and we're not talking about $1,000. I don't think anyone cares about that. But in insignificant amounts as a percentage of your fund balance becomes it it becomes significant in the the practice of doing it becoming normal, normalization of a bad habit would would impact them. Also, being that the fund balance is not really cash, your fund balances, a lot of it is receivables. And because taxes are so far in arrears that you don't have a lot of wiggle room, meaning a million dollars to accommodate for years. When I started being your bond counsel after Mr. Gorham passed, we were issuing TANs, which is
Tax anticipation.
Which is like getting tax anticipation notes, which is like a payday lender. You know, that that's the functional equivalent of it. I mean, even my other clients were also on that 20 years ago and got off of it. North Kingstown issued TANs for years. It's it's they don't, there are there are other communities that issue TANs and as a result, the banks won't lend the money. Even though they're wealthy communities, they just don't like it. And or they're intimidated by the, you know, the pension fund balances or whatever. Because the the full scope of your pension obligations, OPEB and for future post retirement benefits isn't necessarily reflected in your audit. And as other and and other obligations. So also they don't like to see you know, some, you know, deficit in a fund for whatever reason that's run for years and years with no but not addressing it. So Narragansett was pestered by the rating agencies about a $400,000 item, which was really for years. And they were making a mountain out of a molehill, in my opinion, because it was it was a it was a deficit on something that we could bond. We just didn't bond it because we hadn't decided whether to make it taxable or tax exempt. It was going to be bonded. They hadn't decided the project. It was a great project, but and and they can focus in on little things. And, you know, the last thing you want is it being taken down a notch on the ratings because that has real negative consequences. But again, the habit of keeping, running a deficit year upon year upon year, which other communities have done historically, it's unbelievable. Little Compton, it's just incredible what they've managed to do, probably because of bad management. You can't, it it's just inconceivable. But anyway, that's all I have to say. If you have any questions.
David, I just have a question. You had mentioned some some other communities across the country, the rating agencies looking at, I think you used 40%.
I was in shock. I was shocked.
And and not not that you have a crystal ball, but do you do you do you see that coming to to this area?
No, they they seem to like the idea that that we we are fairly diverse. Well, I mean, well, many towns in Rhode Island are diverse. Or they used to be very critical of Jamestown for being completely dependent on residential, which is hysterically ridiculous because they don't have an industrial base. Well, they're never going to have one and they're better off. You but they're these are people that, you know, are not necessarily from New England. Sometimes you have to remind them that these New England townships are not the same as a township even in New York. I mean, it's a totally different concept. They very much like and the reason our towns are rated higher than they would be under the normal model is that we have the ability to tax without limitation as to rate or amount to pay our bonds, which the state did in and and enhanced post 38 studios. So they regarded that as a strong structure. The 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 example I gave and I was shocked to hear it about a 40% fund balance where communities do not have that kind of property tax revenue, they're dependent on sales taxes. It seems incredible to all of us. But so our structure is fine. Even at 4% limitation is is fine with them. But but the perpetual running a deficit and invading fund balance, knowing that there's a million dollars of cash is problematic to them because they know that one slip and you're you're probably you. If you ran into a problem, you will pay the bonds. There's no question.
Right.
The Superior Court will assess a tax on you on each and without limitation as to rate or amount to pay. So it's not, it it's 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 not that kind of, you know, you'll you'll stiff them entirely and walk away and file bankruptcy. And that's not what they see. They don't like you missing a
Sure.
It's it's like GMA seat does not like you missing a payment. They don't care. You'll make you can make five payments thereafter to make them. They're not going to be happy about it. So that's
Thank you.
Thanks. Richard Finnegan, Rich Road, I appreciate you enlightening all us residents of the fund balance. And so what I heard, because I can't hear very well, I guess. I didn't hear anything about why this meeting was scheduled at the school department. Why why was that meeting scheduled at the school department? And mostly, school employees were at that meeting. So if it's the town, what did the school have to do with this fund balance? Was it the 190,000 that was voted on at the finance? At the finance town meeting?
I I don't know how this meeting got to the point where it's a there's a perception that there was a behind the scenes issue. I was asked to prepare a presentation to, as we've done right now, trying to describe and define what fund balance was. That was the only extent of the meeting to say, okay, you want me to come in and talk? Just like Chuck had asked me to get Karen and David together just to make ourselves available so that people who are hearing the concept of fund balance understand what it is, how it's used, the expectation of the rating agencies, things of that nature. I don't know where this meeting got the whole misconception that it was, you know, behind the scenes trying to do something. What could we do other than educate the the audience and and the school committee? Because there is a sincere, I think, a a misconception by both the some elected officials as well as some residents as to this pot of gold that we're sitting on. And that's not the case. There's a purpose for it. There's a financial reason that the financial statements are prepared and presented in such a way. And as as our bond council suggested, there is a there are a lot of things like statutory requirements for paying bonds that people should understand why we're allowed to have a 10% because they're always going to get paid. Debt is going to get paid. However, paying operating expenses relying on accumulated fund balance is a an irresponsible way of managing municipal government. And that was the purpose of the meeting, just to educate, just to literally have a briefing to say, hey, do you understand? Do you understand the concept of fund balance? And I was unaware, but I assume I could meet with anybody to to discuss. I have invited to meet with anybody, sit down and say, what do you want from the treasurer's office? What what information do you need? How would you like it presented? I'm more than welcome to show up as we've done this evening and try to describe a financial concept that's elusive at best. And and sometimes very difficult to understand, even for someone who, you know, we're trained to do this. And as I said, I've taught a lot of accounting courses and this is the most difficult concept that fund balance, it's fund accounting. You know, everybody takes one course and and they regret it after when they're finished. And then we spend the rest of our lives practicing fund accounting.
So I want to set the record straight. The school committee wasn't even invited to that meeting. There was only one member of the school committee. That was the chairwoman, Erica McCormick. Tim McCormick was there. Ted was there. The school finance director was there, the coordinator director and Patty Martin. Those are the people. Majority of them were school members. Let me go on because that doesn't matter now. We, the people who deserve this presentation, just received it and I thank the council for that. Did the council take any money from the fund balance to use for operating expenses this year?
We budgeted Ted, I don't know, we we budgeted to use that amount of fund balance like 100 typically. That's like $125,000 what we typically budget, which effectively means that you're budgeting for $125,000 loss. I mean, for all intents and purposes. Now, the goal is to come in in the black and not use that. And I think many years that's the case, but you know, time will tell if if in this current fiscal year, we have, well, we are going to because the schools, that that amount was allocated to the schools, that's up to the school district, but that's that could or could not be used for however they're going to use it. But at the town side, we don't anticipate using the 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 money that's set aside for fund balance. fund balance for operating expenses or any other expenses.
So a hundred and twenty five thousand?
I think it's roughly like that, Richard, something like.
Not two hundred thousand? I remember two hundred thousand. Did, did the townspeople vote for two hundred thousand?
I don't remember what the exact cost was.
Well, they voted for one twenty five, if I'm right off the top of my head, plus the hundred ninety. So they voted for, you know, substantially more than the one twenty five.
I think if you review the records, it's two hundred thousand. Talking about critical status. Please, next month, come back and let me know. I really like to be corrected. I'm getting old, so I like to be informed. Are we in critical status or are we going to be in critical status? And I'm sorry, I'm singing the same old song. But this goes back to nineteen ninety, when there was an error made with the city of Providence water supply board. There was a fourteen million dollar error that we paid with a five million dollar bond and one million dollars a year, just shy of one million dollars a year, that we gave them a benefit in their tax treaty. And that benefit has gone on since nineteen ninety. I hope this council, this, when I say this council, I mean the Situate Town Council reviews that tax agreement and claws back that million dollars benefit that we've been given the city of Providence. We wouldn't be having fiscal problems in this town if we had a million dollars more in tax revenue. Thank you.
All right, Ted, I want to, I want to say one thing first. Okay. Because he's making a reference to this about a secret meeting you guys had and everything like that. I said it once before at a public meeting and I'll say it again. I'm the one that asked Tim McCormick to put a meeting together with Ted and other people. And the reason I was concerned was because at the town financial, excuse me, the town financial meeting, a guy got up and said that we had five million dollar surplus. Let's spend it to keep our taxes down. And I know we should have at least fifteen percent. It's irresponsible to go below ten percent, but we should have fifteen percent. I've talked to Ted about it. I've talked to Jay about it. I've talked to other people about it. The reason I asked Tim McCormick, Tim McCormick got involved in it, was because when we were having the load of moderate income problem up on Pine Hill Road, right? I found out that Ashley Sweet had a presentation together, which a lot of people who were here went and saw the presentation, which was a good presentation. And I had Tim put that together for me and he did a great job. So to insinuate that Tim McCormick had something to do with the school, getting the school people there and like that, that's wrong. You know, there was no secret meeting and I just want to clear the air.
Absolutely.
Because I resent the fact, and I think it's irresponsible to turn around and get us below ten percent. And we're below it now. You know, so as the, you know, it's our financial responsibility to try to get it to fifteen percent. I know we don't have the money because we're starting a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in the hole already, next budget cycle. You know, and then you can see it on social media. Everybody in the town is complaining about us hitting four percent every year. So we've got to do something about that. I don't know what we're going to do yet because we're already starting in the hole.
Well, I think, as I'd indicated, we, we, we plug that number because we don't want to underestimate our expenses and then also use fund balance. So, you know, a perfect illustration is, is snow removal. We, we budget X number of dollars, assuming a, a normal snow season. If we don't get that, then we'll offset that amount of money that we, we, we allocated and we'll be good. We'll run a surplus. The one issue that I need to address is, this town is a well-managed town. We get an unqualified opinion every year from our auditors, that we don't have any issues with our rating agencies. We've had a double A rating for, I can't remember. I remember inviting an analyst in that was visiting Providence. I was on the phone with him and he was our analyst, only reads the Providence Journal when it was a journal and didn't know anything about Situate. He came through Situate and I spent an afternoon with him, driving him around through the reservoir, showing him our, our real estate. He was very impressed. He went back to New York and, and gave us a wonderful study. Because now that, as David understood, there's a misconception of what our tax base is, how we operate and, and the confines. Despite what everybody says, the city of Providence is a substantial asset to us from a rating agency point of view, because there's no doubt that we're going to get that money from the city of Providence. Now, we can argue how much they should be paying and when they should be paying it, but they pay. And they're never up on tax sale and there's consistency. And I know when I need to pay the bills, that that check's going to be in within the first week of the, the year and then every quarter there. So we are, the message is we're still, we've got a good perception in the financial community and it's irresponsible for someone to stay up here to say we're in fiscal disarray. It's not true. And I stand by those, those statements.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Item eight, public hearings, we don't have any. Public nine, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Good evening, George Kuzmic, Isa Copkins Road. I want to correct the record on an exchange that I had at the last town council meeting when I was asking about the delinquency of filing minutes of meetings. And town clerk Long said that minutes of executive sessions are not filed, which is false, because the day after my remarks, the minutes of the May first meeting of the town council, which was executive session only, were filed with the secretary of state and posted on the town website. There is a format for filing minutes, public minutes of executive sessions that states why the meeting went into executive session, whether any votes were taken and who voted to go into executive session. So the comment made at the last meeting by town clerk Long was factually incorrect and I'm standing here to correct that. I'm also standing here to say that the minutes of the May twenty ninth meeting of the town council, which was an executive session followed by a public hearing, which was the license abandonment hearing, have been filed with the secretary of state, they're still not on the town website. If they're filed with the secretary of state, they should be on the town website the same day. There's no reason for that delinquency.
Thank you, George. Rob?
Rob Bauer, twenty one Sutton Sun Drive. I'm chair of the Land Trust. I just wanted to celebrate our finishing of the trail work we did over the last three years. We had a great celebration out there Sunday, even in, even in the rain. And wanted to thank David D'Agostino for coming out and making some remarks. Peter Musset was there. Thank you for your support through all this. We, we had some really nice comments made by our speakers, Senator Jack Reed and Director of DEM Terry Gray and Kate Sales from the Rhode Island Land Trust Council. I think we really demonstrated that we can go after these big grants and do it together. It's a lot of collaboration. That was kind of the keynote of the comments, collaboration, local, state, federal, volunteers from the ground up. Can't, can't do it without that. And we had it and we really are pleased with the results and invite everyone to get out and enjoy the trails this fall. We were able to do upgraded trail work on Lawton Farm with some boardwalks and interpretive signs, West Canuck Meadows, similar, interpretive signs, kiosk out front. Doctors Lane, Trot Perry Reserve, again, another example of collaboration with the Hope Associates, the town leases the recreational areas there and the land trust has some conservation easements on two of those properties. So we were able to pull all that together and those trails are beautiful down there. And I think what we were able to do is make them more visible to people from that parking lot on North Road. And I'm down there almost every day in the fall or during nesting season at Lawton Farm when I can't go down there. But everybody's enjoying it, they're taking good care of it and it doesn't feel overused because of the number of, the number of miles of trails and getting around there. Just beautiful location. And then, of course, the big project was Easy Copkin Park with the accessible trails and the timberwork we did. So great success. Now, there's no rest for the weary. There's another big grant available from DEM for five million dollars for recreation. I think there's, you know, other groups that are looking for money and I just encourage us to develop as many projects as we can and get, get them forward. The one the land trust is looking at and I think our hope planning down there has helped set the scene for these, so any projects down there can draw on that planning to support. That's what those grant funding agencies look for. What the land trust wants to do is connect that trail from Riley Lane to the Trot Perry Preserve trails down there along Doctors Lane. You supported us in buying that small parcel there down at the end of Riley Lane. It's going to be fairly easy to put a trail on the parcel. The big problem is getting down to it from Riley Lane. There's a big steep drop off. There's about, about fifty feet between the end of the road and where the property begins. So that's really town, town property, the right of way of the road to, to deal with. And the town should be dealing with that, whether or not we can get those trails in right away, because there's stormwater runoff going down toward the river there. So what we, we need to do, let's get some engineering help to figure out exactly what we need to do there. Pardon me?
Call me tomorrow.
Okay, I'll do that. And I try to work with you to get a proposal for you at the next meeting and then hopefully have enough time to get that application at the end of November. I just want to impress on folks how, you know, this announcement's come up and then you don't have long to put it all together. And you've got to, my two minutes are up, but thank, thank you for that. Last thing I want to say, there's a, some money also available for these conservation easements for farms and woodlots. So if there's any interest in that, please get that into the town, town clerk.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Tom. Sorry about that.
Tom Gallegan, Pine Hill Road. A number of items I have. One, I wanted to speak to the other gentleman that was here. They're talking about sewerage. The development across the street from my house is going to pump nine thousand gallons of waste a day on reservoir property. And I've noticed, I've talked to the city of Providence and I've said this before, they're not a good neighbor. They don't care. The fellow there laughs at the town of Situate. That's one. I can't remember what else I wanted to talk about. Aren't you lucky? Oh yeah, I had a question on the fire stations. I'll put it to you, you can ask John. Have we found land yet?
As far as I know, we got the two parcels picked out. They've got to get engineering done, right, John?
Now, are we trading Situate property for it?
No. We, oh yeah, yes, we are. There we are, sorry.
All right. Has they, have they gone to Mayor Smiley and asked him if he would give us two, three acre parcels? Why wouldn't you go to the mayor? I always learn you start at the top, you don't start somewhere else.
John?
They're a quasi-governmental agency. They're not truly part of Providence.
I know they are.
Well, you're asked, you asked me a question, I'm answering it. I went to the director of that agency and started the talks with him to do a land swap for two parcels of that. And they've been very gracious in the process.
What do they want, another road of ours? You were here, Charlie, when they wanted the road up behind the state police.
There's no roads involved in this swap whatsoever. It's land that's really useless to the town of Situate and we have a big gain from the two parcels they're offering us with road access.
They own half of the town of Situate and we're giving them more land? They should give us two, three acre parcels. And I think we should talk to the mayor about it.
Tom, Tom, my, my memory serves me right and John can correct me, isn't this the land behind the DPW?
Yes.
Yes. It's all, it's all graded downhill.
You rent?
Well, I mean, it's a land swap, so there's not rent. So basically the land we're trading is useless to us.
That's one piece of land, right?
Well, that's what, that's what we're trading for the land for the police station. Fire station, fire station. So we're trading basically, John can correct me if I'm wrong, we're trading basically land behind DPW that's slopes downhill, that's useless. For land that we can build a fire station on.
Yeah.
So it appears to be, for two parcels, it appears to be a pretty good trade. It is to be.
Yeah. The other thing is, a few meetings ago, the council was concerned about money, as you guys spoke about tonight. One, Charlie, last time you were president, you had one year, you didn't raise the taxes at all. Now, if there's a money problem, has the treasurer looked into it and kind of figured out what's causing our problems now? Because you're right, the taxes don't affect me, I'm lucky. I've lived too long. But I, I'd like to see the taxes come down for the people in town. So what happened to our money? Where did it go where it could go from zero increase to almost four percent a year? Just, you know, I don't know if you would. Yeah, use this.
During the budget cycle, we, we look and really, and I'm not trying to point any fingers, but education dollars, it's very, very expensive to educate our children. And until we can get control of that or get additional funding from the state, it'll continue to be an extraordinary draw on every, our community and every community. Because if you look at the increases on the town side, they're insignificant.
No, I see that. And I know it's the schools. Have we looked into the schools?
Wait a minute, let me just answer one part of it. Because I was on the council and luckily we had the fiscal year we've had at the time. Tom, we lost one point seven million dollars one year from the state.
Yeah.
Right, that was when they took the motor vehicle tax away from the state, froze the motor vehicle taxes. I remember that. So what we did was luckily, Bob Budway was the president and Ernie McKeel was the school committee chair. They went to the school unions and they got them for two or three years to take a zero. Right, then they turned around and they went to the DPW, the police department, unions like that, and they all took zeros for two or three years like that. That's what helped us out of that. And then we split the baby. It was like nine hundred thousand one year and nine hundred thousand the second year. So that's what got us over. So we lost a big chunk there. You know, then we had like the school aid, they cut it in half and then they cut it more. Now this year, they gave us eight hundred extra thousand dollars. Do we know we're going to get that next year? It's built in our budget. If we don't get it, we're, we're in real trouble. You know, then you got inflation on top of that, cost of living and that, that's what's happening. You're right, we did have zeros.
Yeah.
We did.
These guys.
But anyway, is there anybody else?
Now, the other thing that bothers me.
Oh, God.
And there's nothing. The other thing that bothers me is, and I don't think we can do anything about it. I see so much gambling advertised on television. And I think about the kids in this area, you know? Call in for five dollars and we'll give you a hundred dollars credit. I don't know if we should get them to be licensed over our airways. I don't know if it can be done. I asked it once before, right, Ted? And you said that the, our attorney said there's nothing can be done. But this is bad advertisement for young kids. I don't know if we can do anything about it.
So unfortunately, the short answer is no. The FCC has told jurisdiction over that. So that's a federal issue.
We should make them get a license to, to go over our rear wheel. We should make them get a license to, to go over our rear wheels.
Okay. Alright, Tom, let Richard get up here.
Richard Finnegan, Ridge Road. Human Resource Manual, any update on that?
Karen, you're still working on it, right? Human Resource Manual? No, there's no update on that.
So, when, I believe this update started December twenty twenty-three. Christmas is coming up. I know the people at the town hall would love to have Christmas Eve off. Like the gentleman at the highway department. One of the council people said they don't wanna freewheel us. So we need to get the manual done. I, I think we've been patient. And I think the council should get it done. I don't understand.
I think you should let us worry about that.
No, I think the residents should worry about it.
Well, you can't worry about it too, but we'll take care of it.
Cause these are our employees, just like they're your employees. And we like them be taken care of, just like the men at the highway garage, taken care of.
Yeah, and women.
There's one woman there. The five thousand opera funds for Hope Associates, we gave them for engineering. Any update on any improvements at Hope Associates?
I haven't had any, I'll find out for you though, if you want me to.
Or was it just a waste of money? It was just
Never a waste of money.
A pony show for the residents, showing that we're gonna do something, but we never do it.
Okay.
And the opera funds, again, we have a lot of money that hasn't been spent. What's, what is the town council doing to make sure that money is spent? That we don't give thousands and thousands of dollars back to the federal government. Um, because I keep hearing, we don't have any money. So, once we get the money
When does it have to be spent? By, uh, December twenty-sixth, is it? We have till December twenty-sixth to spend it.
Oh, I'm very well aware when we have it to spend.
And what are you asking?
So we're gonna, cause, cause we're gonna sit on our hands, not tell these organizations that they need to spend the money and get it spent.
It will be
Make sure
Don't you worry about it, it'll be
It will be.
Yes.
Okay, so, when it's not, so what are you gonna tell the people of this town when that money has to be given back to the federal government? What are you gonna tell them? I'm sorry? That I didn't do my job? I was sitting on my hands, is that what you're gonna tell them?
Sitting on my hands.
Then what have you been doing to make sure that these organizations?
Questions.
Yes, I do. What are you doing to make sure these organizations are spending their money?
Comment. That's all, not getting into the debate with you.
Oh, you don't have to.
I'm not.
But I, I want, why, I want the people of this town to know that this council is sitting on their hands, not doing any work.
You're wrong.
Get these organizations to spend that money. And what we're gonna find out, coming December twenty twenty-six, that thousands of dollars was, the thousands of dollars were not spent.
Okay, that's your opinion, Richard, thank you.
Prove me wrong.
Okay, I will. Anybody else have anything?
Hi, Cindy Gianfrancesco, two ninety-nine, Glenna Chapel Road. First, I want to thank everybody for listening to the presentation regarding Hope Pond. I hope that we can keep the momentum going. And so in order to see that that actually happens, can we get it on next month's agenda so that we can get an update? I know one of the recommendations was to have the town building official start to take a look at property sales and, and which ones. So if we could keep it on, on next month's agenda so that we can keep track of this, I would really appreciate it.
Sorry for that.
And I will look into adding the extra sampling parameters. I don't think I can get it done for this month, but I can probably do it for October. That'll, that's the last sampling of the year, but maybe it'll start to give us an idea of, you know, where the contaminants are coming from. The other thing I wanted to mention, and this has been in our monthly report for the past few months, was our space needs. And I hate to keep harping on it, but Cheryl Ignatia has been more than gracious to allow us the use of space at the Chotna Center, but we really need more space than that. We basically got our file cabinets just shoved into a corner and don't have good access. And we all have stuff at home that is land trust or Conservation Commission stuff that we need a place for. I know we've talked about trying to get the former Clayville School project moving.
Um, it's the inside that needs to be completed.
Right.
And DPW is more than willing, I believe, I received an email that they're willing to do that, but it has to be on an off time when they're not busy.
Right, okay.
You know, middle of winter, stuff like that. So they're really not at that time right now because
Okay, alright, well I didn't realize that, that that, we had gotten to that point.
Sorry, I haven't gotten back to you, I've just been really busy.
Why don't we just put it on the agenda for next month?
Could we, that'd be great, if we can put it on the agenda for next month and get an update.
Right. And we, and, and I think there was a, I believe, you know, Peter and the co, the co-chairs of the renovations there. I mean, they had a pretty good idea of what needed to be done inside anyway.
Yeah, I know that you were looking to get a copy of the report, yeah. And we're more than willing to help in any way we can, the Conservation Commission and Land Trust, so if there's anything
You know, the, uh, the, what's in there now?
Absolutely.
You know, things that were built to preserve
Yes, absolutely.
And we know that you'll be a good steward of that.
Yes, we will, yeah, we will, definitely. The last thing I want to do is just thank John Robinson for all the work that he did trying to get um, the gate at Hope Dam repaired. Uh, it looks like it was successful. The, the levels are almost up to normal. There's no water going over the dam yet, but it's close. Um, I was out there today and it looks really good and, and I, I think that was a success. Um, I just hope that, that it holds, cause we know that that gate system isn't in the best condition. So, fingers crossed, we don't have another incident like that. Um, cause I understand there were a lot of people who had no drinking water for quite a period of time, and that's not a fun thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
But Cindy, I want to thank you and, and Rob and your whole crew for the, the work you do on this. It's a lot of volunteer hours. I know it's a lot and we really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, so this is no other, but
I have a question. What do you think of the thing up on Pine Hill Road? You were talking about this earlier today. I didn't realize you were part of the earlier presentation. I wanted to ask that fellow. But, they're gonna dump nine thousand gallons of waste a day into the ground on Pine Hill Road and Pine Swamp is just down a little ways. And the city of Providence is approving. What is that? Can you explain that to me?
I, I can't explain it and
Alright, could, could you guys go talk to over there, please? Tom, go talk to over there.
No, no, I'm talking here. The other thing is, you talked about that. You, you talked about that. I seen people up here refuse loan payments for septic systems because the council has said they can't afford it. What are we gonna do with people then? No?
No.
You and Timmy both said it.
No, I have to tell you exactly what I said. There are parameters, financial parameters that are set up to qualify for that loan. No different than if you went and borrowed money to buy, for buy a house or a car and your finances weren't in shape enough that the bank would loan you money. They weren't even close to the numbers, Tom. They were way outside the parameters. So basically what we were looking at is loaning money out, loaning town money or guaranteeing the loan basically to people that weren't, weren't qualified to pay that loan back. So basically, when, when, basically we were putting town, your taxpayer, your taxes at, at risk, okay? Because we made a decision to cover a loan that we should never cover because they didn't fit within the rules that were set up to get that loan.
Well, I told you, I'd rather see a resident stiff us. And what are they gonna do?
Can I, can I? Can I add to that, sir? In the last one that was denied, that I believe that you were talking about and uh, with Councilman Grande saying they didn't meet the parameters. Their income far exceeded the minimum income that was needed to qualify for that loan, their lo, that loan interest loan. In other words, they were making to qualify for that loan.
I understand that.
That's, that's, that's not correct. The, their debt was far in excess of, the, the house was, the house had, was underwater, it was upside down. It had more debt than it had value.
People like that, just let the septic run in the yard?
Well, you know what, Tom? It's no different than when one group of people came to us and asked us to repave a private road. Okay, over, and I explained to them, I explained to them that when you have a contract to build a private road, okay, and you take that upon yourself, you're to create a homeowners association when you build those houses. You ought to have a board, you're to put money aside for the eventuality that that's gonna happen. Asphalt doesn't last forever. In the same respect is that you have to live within your means. And so when you, as someone said, when you have, if you don't count, you know, if you don't have a savings account and your car breaks down, Jason, you're in trouble because you don't have any money to fix your car. You had to be fiscally responsible so that when the septic system failed or something else failed in your house, roof or whatever, you have them, either the money to do it or the lending capacity to do it, or the borrowing capacity to do it. They didn't have that. So you know what? In the same respect that you're telling me that we should do this, okay, I would have other residents come up and say, how dare you commit twenty, thirty thousand dollars of town money to a lost cause because there's no chance of them paying it back.
Then what do we do? What do you tell the people?
I don't know, Tom, cause I've gotta tell you something. You know what? I've been, I'm in this council seven years. My boy scouts asked me, what was the most difficult decision I ever made on this council? And you know what I told them? You know what I told them? That question.
Yeah.
That was the most difficult. And of all the things we've dealt with, because it's a town person that's struggling with a septic system and you really don't have an alternative. But they'll also have a responsibility to ten thousand five hundred people not to spend their money irresponsibly.
Alright, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item ten, consent items. Uh, have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion remains second. Any questions on it?
I'm gonna be abstaining from
Staining from A to the special meeting, I was not in attendance.
I need, excuse me, I need to abstain from the regular meeting, uh, August fourteenth. I was not in attendance.
And I will abstain for the special meeting as well.
I will too, because I wasn't here either.
Right, so.
Richard?
I, I see there's a bill for grant writer, twenty-five hundred. What, did we get any more grants?
Not that I'm aware of, Richard. That's the, that's the monthly bill, it's a
I just, I just want
No, I don't, I'm not aware of any.
Shredding, four thousand two hundred fifty-four pounds of shredding, the cost of two thousand seven hundred sixty-five thousand ten cents. What are we shredding?
That's probably the stuff upstairs in town hall. You know, getting ready for the school to come up there.
Yeah. Are, are we sure that we need to be shredding town documents or are they not important?
But at town clerk's office, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, we're sure that
There are actual record retention schedules for all that stuff. So after like six years, a lot of stuff can be get, get rid of. So ultimately, if you follow that policy, every year a year will fall off that you have that shred though.
And who, who, who does that? Who, each department head does their own?
Yeah, it's actually a request from the, the state clerk's office that goes through the town clerk through all the departments for all of their
Larry, can you talk about how that process was handled?
Gloria, Gloria.
All set. Alright.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Passes. Item eleven, appointments, review discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. A, Situate two fifty, let's committee, name submitted. One is Tom Angel, the other one is Robert Franz Blue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Barring no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? It passes. Item twelve, resolution, review, discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. Item A, resolution, approving change orders in net amount of two hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred and two to the Situate Middle High School fire alarm upgrades. Project contract to be financed by three million five hundred thousand dollar school bonds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Are we gonna have any discussion on it? Barring no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? That passes. Item B, resolution regarding revision of the school capital budget for purposes of funding from three million five hundred thousand dollars of school bonds.
So moved.
Motion remains second. We have any discussion on that one? Barring no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? That passes. Thank you, young fellow.
Thanks, Dave.
Item thirteen, town, town building business, review discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. A, request from the Okay, request from the sustainability committee to expend funds for a committee website. Annual cost not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Funds to be expended from the due to, from recycling initiative account.
So moved.
I'm sorry, I'm the president of the sustainability committee. It's actually a misprint, it's supposed to be three hundred and fifty. I just want to make that clarification. Okay, um, also there is, um, we pay like thirty dollars.
Can we change that?
It does an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five.
There's no de minimis test in here?
It
I mean, a hundred bucks?
Are you asking me or are you asking someone in the audience behind me?
So there is, don't we have a minimum of, that doesn't have to come to the town council on these accounts for expenditures such as this? That was a question with the sustainability committee as well.
Is, may I ask, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, Terry, but, but, but I, I, I'm just asking, is, can this wait till next month?
We need to pay, like we already, the
Already incurred it?
Yeah, the website's already made. Um, but it's also, we, we're looking for a grant, cause there's thirty dollars a month to like host the website. We are looking to get a grant to, to fund that, but I also would like at least three months so we can get the grant. Um, so, an additional ninety on top of that.
You know, it would be nice if they could tie a grant writer into this as well. And we've tried several times.
Yeah.
But the sustainability committee, they do a great job on their own getting grants and, and, and going after this stuff. It would be really good if we could, you know, get some help on that. That would be, that would be one thing.
I also believe there's a, I don't know the exact number, but I think there's about twelve thousand in our account still in the past two Earth days. It's about twelve thousand. I, I could be wrong.
We're not replenishing that.
No, I know, but we, the last two Earth days, we got grants and we'd fundraised.
Yeah.
So
So what do we do about this though, tonight?
So
It's up to you.
Couple of things. So the, at, what appears in your packet is the email and the math adds up to the two twenty-five you see. Uh, but that being said, they want us, they need to spend more. It can't be voted on tonight, but there's always the ability to ratify the expenditure next month. Then that's between the council president, the town treasurer that have that ability.
I mean, the reality is, it can wait, but I just
I'll withdraw my motion.
Well, you want to make, you want to pay this, at least this.
Right, so, so can't we pay the two twenty-five and then, and then ratify the rest of it?
Yeah, I can come back next month and ask, do I have to come back next month and ask for the balance?
Well, I
Whether you appear is, is up to you, but
We have to have it on our agenda.
We have to have it.
I, I will, I will revive my motion then, but for two twenty-five as stated in the agenda.
And Karen, can we check to see what our minimum is that we need to actually come to the town council for these expenditures? I mean, you know, if it's, I mean, it's three hundred fifty dollars, I mean, you know, it's really
It fits in our mission statement, it's to educate, yeah. I don't, we don't spend a lot of money as a committee.
Council has to rule it.
I, I'll defer to the finance department, but my understanding was that the minimum I'm done, alright. No, uh, my understanding was that the minimum amount applied to the department heads. If that, if I recall, you know, but I'll leave that to the finance departments in German, but so since they're a committee, they're not a
Yeah, we don't have. I guess Kurt would be
Normally this isn't
Our department head.
So, we'll, we'll get it done.
Right, I mean, cycling coordinator is the department head.
Yeah, I, I would assume, I don't know, we're kind of Yeah, I I would assume, I don't know, we're kind of our own.
They're trying really hard to do really good town. I mean, you know.
All right, uh, so we got no other discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Any against? You all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, authorization to convert Amanda Nardone from a temporary clerk to a new full-time floating clerk under the supervision of multiple department heads for a variety of functions, including a public records, grant writing, billing, and other clerical and administrative functions as required. Benefits will be in accordance with the town and situat human resources manual, salary, and start date to be determined by the town council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion remains second. We want to have a discussion on it? Barring no discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Any against? It's all set. Item C.
Just just to be clear, I want to make sure that that motion includes the job description that uh ended up with the agenda packet.
Yes.
Just want that clear in the minutes.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Item C, I've got a request that this be tabled till next month.
Motion tabled.
Thank you.
Motion remains seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? It's all set. Item D, creation of an economic development committee, Terry.
Well, um, we had a lot of discussion about this, um, and Ted was, Tyler was all in favor of it, I guess, at our budget meetings. He had a lot of great ideas, and I I think we really need to have more discussion on how we can create more economic opportunities in the town to help offset some of our expenditures. So actually, you did have some great ideas about.
Try and report.
About maybe having weddings, you know, in places at the town, right? Exactly. I mean, there's a, you know.
Yeah, use of the ass, using the assets, absolutely. Thank you for reminding me of my great ideas.
Anyway, so I think you should be chair of this, but that's uh that's my recommendation. Well, if you weren't here, we would have, we would have voted on that, you know, but um and then I think we, maybe people from the community, actually, you know, somebody from the SBA um, involved in this committee. I mean, I really think, and if if more than a quorum of the town council wanted to be on this committee, we could have a subcommittee that would not. Right? Is that what we do?
So so the, if you create a committee, it's going to be subject to the Open Meetings Act regardless. So you can have a uh, less than a quorum, you could have a quorum of the uh town council. It will be its own standalone committee. It wouldn't require uh, to be a subcommittee of the council.
But I think, you know, people from different quadrants of the town as well, just to make sure that. So I don't know whether we want to advertise to build this committee. Uh, what's the council's plan there?
Terry, I I this is, I'm not volunteering, but I I think it's, I think it's a great, I I think it's a great idea. And um, one of the things that as as someone new to the council, this process, I felt that um uh, the the budget committee I always felt very constrained because what we seem to be trying to do is um try to, you know, like all the things we talked about tonight uh with the presentation, try to do more with less and try to find ways to not have to raise any taxes, but then we faced with the inevitability of having to do that. And I found, I personally found it very frustrating. Um, I would rather I I like the idea of an economic development committee. I think there are a lot of talented people in this town, a lot of people who have participated in um budget committees, a lot of people a lot smarter than I am. Um, and and I'd like to hear some ideas that those people have to try to flip the narrative to the extent possible. And I think that um, you know, we're we're all under uh uh, governments and individuals, you know, we're all under ever increasing financial pressures. They come from from all angles. And I think that uh we should try to get some some talent to think outside the box. I I really support the idea of of an economic development committee, and I'd love to help them with their charge. But I'm not volunteering. I'm just saying, I think it's a good idea. You asked for.
Volunteering either, because I'm on that two fifty committee now, and it's like, it just seems like every committee is like a committee. But again, I think we should, I think we should put it out there. We should put some feelers out there. I think we should try as a town council to recruit people that we believe you know, would be great on the committee. I mean, I I just think it's, I think we should start advertising for it, if that's.
I I um, I I think that makes a lot of sense. What I'd like to see um to the extent possible is if we could as a council, perhaps, try to find the charge of the committee, because a committee without a specific charge.
Mission statement.
Yeah, they they, yeah, I don't want them to be sitting there twiddle, twiddling their thumbs, not that they would do that, but I think I think we should identify what we expect, how we can support the committee in doing its job. I think it's going to be helpful.
Well, uh, it may be other towns. We could look to other towns, but maybe our treasurer could come up with a charge on, you know, I mean, you had a lot of thoughts about that, so maybe you could help us out with the charge.
Are you looking for a commitment? I'll think about it.
Jim, Jim it.
We'll vote on that today, it's not here.
Okay, Mr. President, if to perhaps move this along, hearing everything that's going on, you could, in theory, do both. You could put it out for anyone who's interested and
We should advertise.
You could also charge, say, the treasurer in consultation with the town council president in the solicitor's office. I heard Wyatt volunteered from Charleston where he is right now. Um, to come up with a charge next meeting, and so there would be different votes, right? And what I would say is maybe you hold the appointments till after you've settled on a charge. So it could just be.
So moved. So so moved. Thank you, David.
Yes.
You got to put it out to get a committee. People who want to bounce here for it.
Yeah.
We still got Cindy here, so we're all set. Just kidding.
Just keep it basic. Charge to be determined. Yeah. Right, that's why we would put the charge before the appointments.
All right, so any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? So set. Item E, review of the current trash policy and enforcement protocol.
So um Kurt and I have been talking about this. It been um you know, it's, it it as you drive around town, the vast majority of residents adhere to the policies. Uh, you know, that people have got a couple of cans out front, recycling, a couple of recycling. Um, it's it's typically not a problem. Uh, it's where it becomes a problem is where people, their kid moves out and out of the basement or something, they empty the basement. It's out at the edge of the road. Um, uh, tenants over Coldbrook, Yambie's out the place. If the tenant leaves, it's on the road. Um, I have been made aware of some other folks who have invited, uh, you know, trash from outside the town to be left at their curb because the town and situat will take it. Um, and so and I and I think it's an undue burden on Kurt to have to be the the arbiter of all this stuff because he's got Rambone calling him every day saying, what about this? What about that? And it just seems to me we should tighten up the policy.
We get charged for excess tonnage also.
Yeah, yeah. And so um I mean, Kurt, you tell me if you're wrong, if you you read this, but uh, as as did I, but it seems to be about the uh, no more than three of the thirty gallon containers. Come on up.
Right.
And so is that the, is that the big, is that the size of the recycling bins? Is that a thirty gallon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. The recycling ones are six, but it's really, yeah, but but we're talking about the trash.
Right.
So it's the trash instead.
I mean, but you and I were talking about two two trash bins, two two bashtrins, two recycling bins.
It's perfect. Once in a while you see three, but the majority is two.
Yeah.
Uh, the problem comes when a tenant moves out and they're lying, they clean up your your garage. They call me, I go there, I look at it, uh, you got, you gotta get enough stuff, you know, uh. An issue down the road, three couches, two chairs. You know, we're pretty lenient and we really don't have any parameters to hold it to, you know.
Why why don't, why don't we work together and just come up with an amended ordinance and we can bring it back rather than do this tonight?
Yeah, somebody's got a hose reel and, you know, an extra hose. Yeah, no big deal, but other towns, Smithfield, very strict.
That's the whole thing. And the thing is, it leaves you in the in the situation of having to make these decisions. And somebody, you know, they leave a chair out there. I mean, it's, the policy says no furniture, but chairs is put out there all the time. I mean, so.
So who enforces that? Is that our zoning?
Because the police, the police, the police enforce it.
Right.
So that's what.
Section twelve point five dash thirty-eight enforcement, it shall be the I'm getting cut off. It shall be the responsibility of the town police department to enforce the provisions of this article. So chief, please, 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 come to the podium.
Do you notify or or something like that?
That that's a thirty dollar, thirty-five dollar charge at the landfill to drop off electronic equipment because
Don't take that at DPW.
Typically has lead, right? Yeah.
They'll they'll take it. That'll go to the DPW. I mean, it it's not, it's not fair to the town.
No, it's not.
So what if, what if Kurt and I work on a revised policy and try to come up with something?
And the chief.
And the chief. Now, he's going to keep monitoring and coordinating, so that.
Next agenda, the the fees, the fees for the dog catcher.
I think more education of of what can be.
I think I think that'd be part of the revision.
But I but I've said that over and over and again. I I really I really think more education and whether we send out a postcard or whether we send out email, I think a postcard, email blast them. They don't hit half of the town, but I really think of postcard on what can be left. And once you go through that ordinance and and maybe that's the answer is, you know, this is what's recyclable. This is what can be put out on your trash. This is the tipping fees and this is the 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 how much we're being charged because we're not adhering to this, and this is affecting your tax dollars.
Yeah.
You know, dull, it it matters, and I think it should go out to the town. I really do.
Yeah. Okay, we'll leave it at that then.
Yeah, leave it at that. Yeah.
All right.
So we'll put it on for.
Next. Well, I know it's gonna be next agenda. We're gonna work on an ordinance. It'll come back.
All right. All right, item F, uh request from Hope Jackson Fire to have DPW pave the administration parking lot at one sixteen Main Street Hope, expense from a liability L account due from Hope Jackson Fire Company to be reimbursed by HJFD over the next two years.
So moved.
Second.
Motion remains second. Any comment on it? Kurt, you got anything to say about it?
Whatever I have.
So you you're available, all right?
Yeah.
Okay. No other comment? Okay, he's recusing himself. Uh, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? It's all set. Item G, treasurer's recommendations concerning allocation of the deficit and unassigned fund balances.
So so moved.
I I haven't made my recommendation.
Okay, well, I I figure we have to have a discussion, right?
Oh, okay. Um you got to vote, you got to move it.
No.
So.
So so you you don't need a motion to discuss it. He can present and.
Uh, we we touched upon this at the uh, the the earlier discussion. We can write it off or we can allocate it over ten years. My recommendation is we amortize it and we make it part of subsequent budgets.
So you're talking four hundred thousand dollars over ten years, forty thousand bucks a year.
Yeah, just to demonstrate consistency and you want to make it five years? You know, a hundred dollars a year, whatever you want to do, but I I do encourage amortization and then we stick with it. Jason, you're looking at me like saying, what?
Uh, is the bond for this a ten-year bond?
I'm sorry, I don't remember. It's fifteen, I think.
If it's fifty, I mean.
Any bond amortization?
Necessarily, because we're already a few years.
I mean, but the remaining bond, am is it?
It's ultimately whatever that.
That makes sense.
And that's probably ten.
Yeah, it's it's a little less than ten. Excuse me, a little more.
It's got to be mapped to the project for us. So when we're done paying, we're really.
Your recommendation is to to amortize it. My recommendation is to to amortize it over the remaining life of the bond that covered it. How's that?
Great.
Okay.
Does that also help us with the audit?
Yes, because in the footnote, they'll say that we've addressed it.
Yeah, we've got the financial plan.
Richard will be all set.
Deficit.
Okay.
So moved.
That's second.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion? Barring no discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Item fourteen, Gary?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made in second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.